Okay, you're all set. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Barnstable Barnstable Town Council meeting, January 7th, 2021. Happy New Year, everybody. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Not hearing any? Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, roll call, roll call, please.
Thank you. Counselors, absolists?
Present.
Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagewan.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levesque.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Neff.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Star.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
We have quorum, all thirteen.
Thank you. Now, if we could all please stand and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, for a moment of silence, during a moment of silence, let's please keep our country and those affected by the most unfortunate event that took place at our nation's capital building in our prayers, that we would heal and recover, and that our nation's leaders would lead with wisdom and kindness. That being said, I would like to invite Council Hebert to speak about another local hero.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we all could keep in our thoughts and prayers, the passing of Robert Hayes O'Gara, who was eighty-eight years old, lived in, and passed away here in Hyannis. He was a very proud member of the VFW here in Barnstable. He was a Korean War veteran. I had the privilege of being with him when the president's award from South Korea was presented to the Town of Barnstable last year. So if you keep him and all veterans in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Now it is time to hear public comment. Sarah, do we have anybody in the queue?
There's no public comment at this time.
Then we would probably move past council response to public comment. We don't now have any public comment. And that being said, do we need to give it a few minutes?
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Or you could move on and then come back if somebody shows up.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Noob, I appreciate that.
We, Council President Levesque?
Yes, sir.
I'll have my first speaker give the update and then pause and turn it back over during town manager communication so that you can check with Sarah.
Very good. Thank you for that, Town Manager Ellis. So, without further ado.
Well, thank you, Mark Ellis, Town Manager. Happy New Year to everybody. This is Town Manager's report for the period of December 18th through January 7th, 2021. We're going to begin with Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development, providing us an update on support that we've been providing to business through and concurrent with the COVID situation. Elizabeth, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. The Town of Barnstable staff has been working since the beginning of the state of emergency in support of our small and local businesses. Even though our doors are closed, we want businesses to know that we are working to help keep theirs open. We recognize small businesses as the foundation of our economy and of the main streets that make our town so special. We have a number of efforts in various stages of implementation, and on behalf of my colleagues at the town this evening, I'd like to provide you with information about a few. First, from our regulatory departments, the Licensing Authority has adopted policy changes allowing fee credits and reductions and license extensions for businesses with alcohol licenses that have been unable to open as a result of the governor's orders or other circumstances during this time. Additionally, regulatory departments have provided flexibility with payments required for other required certifications and inspections. In addition, town regulatory staff continues to provide support for businesses looking to adapt their locations and business models to these new conditions. Additionally, the town has been able to provide direct assistance to some degree to businesses. So far, in partnership with our transformative development initiative team, the towns provided sixty thousand indirect assistance grants to small businesses in downtown Hyannis through our mass development partnership. We, the Commonwealth recently announced an additional six hundred and sixty-eight million indirect assistance for small businesses. And in the economic development bill that was recently agreed upon by the legislature and which is on the government's desk, there's an additional twenty million dollars of direct assistance included for restaurants. We want businesses to know that if they have questions about these state programs where they feel like they need assistance with these applications, that they can contact us at the Planning and Development Department, and we will do everything we can to assist you in putting together a complete and successful application. Additionally, the town, the town put a significant effort in this summer in Hyannis Main Street to provide for expanded outdoor dining and outdoor business use. We made adaptations to Hyannis Main Street this summer to create a self, safe, and welcoming environment for residents and visitors and promoting outdoor business use and success of businesses. Limiting Main Street to one way not only allowed for expanded dining and expanded dining and shopping options, provided an attraction at a time where people were looking to spend time outside and get away from the city to enjoy, to enjoy shopping and dining. Thanks to the contributions of the Department of Public Works, Police and Fire, Planning and Development, Asset Management, and other town departments, we were able to make this adaptation swiftly to allow restaurants to take full advantage of the summer season. In addition, the town adopted a streamlined regulatory process to allow temporary expansion of outdoor dining for restaurants in all villages, not just Main Street, really thanks to the tremendous effort of Richard Scally, Maggie Flynn, Brian Florence, Tom McKean, and David Anthony, again, able to adapt and help businesses very quickly. Additionally, the town got support from Mass DOT on a shared streets and places grant to add additional enhancements to the street and carry, carry the attractiveness forward. The town also partnered with agencies such as the Business Improvement District to try to reimagine some of the special events that make Main Street so attractive in the summer, including support for the drive-in. We're currently working to roll out adaptive strategies to promote Barnstable as a unique and attractive summer destination in the summer of 2021, building on what worked well last summer and promoting the unique advantages of Cape Cod for residents and visitors. We're working with partners on two grants being offered from the Transformative Development Initiative to support additional changes in regulatory process in support of small business and another one in support of our creative economy. Finally, over the next few months, we look forward to participating in the Commonwealth's Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program. This is technical assistance being offered to create data-driven strategies to address COVID-19 recovery needs, and we anticipate additional funding coming to provide assistance for strategies to meet those needs. Additionally, the town, in all departments, looks to enhance our business communications and create and strengthen new online resources for business. We continue to evaluate our resources and opportunities to assist businesses during this pandemic and position them for a successful recovery. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions relevant to the work that we are doing, have done, or are planning to do relevant to support of our businesses here in Barnstable? Thank you. Okay.
Counselor Cullum.
Thank you. So, thank you for all your efforts and for enumerating them because it's, it's really ghastly what's happening to the restaurant industry. It's really setting so many people back financially. I sell wine and my, I was up for the summer because of all of the off-premise or retail business booming, but for restaurants, it's really, really difficult. Last night I went to Bluefin and Chatham and had an excellent meal. It was delicious, but we were only allowed to dine for ninety minutes, and we were just getting rolling, you know? So we would have spent one hundred fifty more dollars if we'd had the opportunity to do so. So just the, the people who are running these restaurants all summer long, every six weeks, were forced to find a new plan, a new, open a new restaurant under new circumstances, pay for the Plexiglas, which is like enormously expensive, reinvent how many, how they're going to fit people where, and now they're down to twenty-five percent, as everybody knows, for the future, at least, at least two more weeks after today's press conference from Governor Baker. So I'm sure that it's appreciated, and I'm sure the partnership with the bid will go a long way in, in ironing out really exciting new paths for, for restaurants in the future for us. So, thank you for all your efforts on that, on that front and for kind of heading the, heading the team there. I think that they're, they're not lost, and I think we should cultivate more in the future. So thanks for bringing it, bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Counselor Cullum. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Counselor Absolus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elizabeth, so I had some comments over the summer. Overall, I, there's a lot of positive feedback on what happened on Main Street this summer, the efforts made by your department and so many others in town. But one of the questions that came up with some folks, how do you determine how much outdoor seating space one establishment receives versus another? I think if you walk or drive down Main Street during the summer, there were some restaurants that had a few tables in certain area outside of their restaurant, yet another restaurant might have a much larger space spread out down the sidewalk. How did you determine that? Because it just seemed like some folks were concerned that they were receiving less outdoor tables versus some other restaurants.
Sorry, I see my colleague, Brian Florence, with his hand up, so I'll let him provide a response, and then I can add, sorry.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Counselor Absolus, and Mr. President. So, there's a combination of things that would limit someone. One, first and foremost, is what they presented to us. There were very few establishments that came to us with a plan that we didn't approve. The only thing that may have limited what they could do is the space available. So, a sidewalk is only so wide, and, and so too are the, the parking spaces in front of them. So, we established a situation where as long as they could meet the social distancing requirements of the governor's order, they could use as much space as they could get. So, really, the, the limits, they were only limited by the governor's orders and the space available to them and what they proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy.
Thank you, President Levesque. I have a question. Obviously, I know that the Director of Assessing is not here, so maybe this is directed to either Elizabeth or to the Town Manager. We sort of saw a perfect storm in 2020, which were, one, the required reassessments of property, coupled with what is our typical commercial tax rate increase. But for some small businesses, that hit hard in terms of the perfect storm, where their assessment went up substantially and they were unprepared. Could you discuss a little bit what, if anything, and would be available to some of those small business owners in terms of relief?
I'll, I'll take that, and if Mark Milne is, I don't, I don't see him on my screen right here, but he may be.
He's here.
Mark, would you like to take this one?
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for the question, Counselor. You, Mr. President, yeah, so what we can offer these small businesses in the form of property tax relief would be that I would encourage them to file for an abatement and provide updated information as far as their income and expenses in fiscal, in calendar year 2020 goes, and present that to the Board of Assessors to see if that can provide them some property tax relief, that they will have to file for abatement.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mark, can you share with the counselors the process that we did go through? Because we also recognized that it was a dramatic change from nineteen to twenty. And so, we, we didn't just proceed as if that didn't exist, that we did have discussions with DOR.
Yes. We, we did request the Department of Revenue whether or not COVID-related impacts could be taken into consideration in the fiscal year 21 valuation. They responded that they could not be taken into place, into consideration because the values are set as of January 1, 2020. And so, COVID did not happen. It, it happened subsequent to that valuation date. So then we asked, well, what do we do about going forward? And is there any consideration that we can provide to these property tax owners? And they responded that the way to do that would be through the abatement process. Because we have to, we have to look at a full year's data of sales and income information to properly determine those valuations. And so we have to look at a full calendar year, and the last full calendar year is calendar year 2019. And so, all the assessments are based on that. Next year, the assessments will probably dramatically shift in the other direction because 2020 calendar year will be taken, the income associated with business properties will be taken into consideration in setting the values that we'll use for the fiscal year 22 tax bill. And so, I can only imagine that they're going to go in the other direction as a result of COVID-19. So for this year, we'll have to use the abatement process to potentially provide them some relief.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mark. Counselor Shnet, say, Vice President Shnet.
Thank you, President Levesque. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your report, and I commend you and, and staff for really making the summer a very lively time on Main Street. I mean, I don't think anybody thought we missed a beat, and, and the creative, creative ways that you, everyone approached it. I, I think that was excellent. And I, I think, and I'm hoping that lessons learned, that this may be an annual event regardless of COVID. So, I know the arts and culture, I don't, it's not an industry, but area was really impacted because performances were difficult. How were artists' shanties program affected this summer?
Thank you, Vice President Shnet, for the question. So we did run the Artist Shanty program this summer. It was, it was a tough decision because, you know, there was so much uncertainty really when, when we were scheduled to open. So we delayed our opening, but did end up running the program. We actually had fewer artists participate than we typically see, just as a result of the restrictions. But we actually saw sales that were on par with other years despite the limited number of participants and, and a limited timeframe. So I, you know, I thought that was, you know, certainly credit to Melissa Chartrand and the fantastic job that she does organizing and promoting that. But to her, it was very important to keep that running this summer. It was really one of the few options, I think, that artists had, again, with all the special events and fairs and things like that, not proceeding. It was a great option for people to be able to, to network and, and, and reach the public. So, so it was, it was very successful. I believe Melissa just put out a call to artists for next season as well. So she starts that early. So if you know folks, I believe she intends to try to open both the Bismarck and the, and the new Harbor, Harbor Overlook Shanties next year as well. And, and yeah, I will just say to your, to your first comment, you know, something that we saw on Main Street this summer that was so successful was that sort of environment and atmosphere that we have been working so hard to create with, with really the emphasis on pedestrian space and, and outdoor use and the slowed-down traffic, the new lighting that went up by the bid and the town, that partnership, you know, the, the outdoor music and things like that. It, you know, it really creates the special atmosphere on Main Street, and we're certainly working together with the bid and with the Department of Public Works to think about how we can build on that success to, to create a really great place on Hyannis Main Street.
And might we get a preview at the MMA? I saw on the agenda that you and Elizabeth Whorfing were going to be presenters.
We did. So if you're joining the MMA, I encourage you to watch the session. We were very honored to be asked by the state, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Program to participate in a session about collaborative partnerships between towns and district improvement agencies. So I should have brought some of the fantastic photos that we're going to share there, but we have a taped session and we'll be there as well for Q and A. Thanks.
Counselor Dagewan, you had your hand up previously.
I think my question got answered by the Vice President Snapp concerning the arts programs this summer and perhaps some of the other retail stores, how well they getting through the pandemic and all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. You mentioned sixty thousand dollars in grants going to the businesses in Hyannis. Has there been consideration for other businesses, small businesses throughout the Town of Barnstable?
Absolutely. So that money came from our status as a gateway city and our participation in Mass. Development's Transformative Development Initiative Partnership. So that is a group of public and private, nonprofit businesses focused largely around the east end of Main Street and revitalization of that area. So that was that funding source. I, I will tell you that we're anticipating an additional round of CARES money through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and we have a third of that earmarked for direct assistance for, for businesses. So we're still waiting on that money. We spent most of our first round on, on food security and other programs focused around the public service category, but we are working on, on programming and implementation of additional direct assistance for businesses townwide.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Any further comment or questions? Not seeing any. I just wanted to say thank you, Elizabeth, for your presentation and, you know, the wonderful staff, I should say our wonderful staff, and Brian Florence, David Anthony, and I think we'd be remiss not to mention our Director of Regulatory Services, Richard Scally, who has done yeoman's work with restaurants and licensing in Barnstable to effectively help those restaurants that need some, need a break and needed some assistance in this, during this pandemic. So thank you very much again for your presentation. And we can move on. Just want to, want to circle back one more time with Sarah. Any public comment?
Still no public comment.
Okay, very good. So let's continue with the Town Manager's Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Ellis. It's a great pleasure that I announced that Mary Hallway, Old Barnstable Fairground Head Professional, has won the 2021 Gary Philbrick Professional of the Year Award. The, the award is the highest award given out by the Cape Cod Professional Golf Association. Mary's been working for the Town of Barnstable at the Old Barnstable Fairgrounds since 1995 and was mentored by the award's namesake and the late OBF Director, Gary Philbrick. Mary became the Head Professional of OBF after Gary's untimely passing in twenty, I'm sorry, 2005. In that time, Mary has been the consummate professional in the face of the Old Barnstable Fairgrounds. Her hard work and dedication over the last twenty-five years is commendable. Old Barnstable Fairgrounds runs like a well-oiled machine, known for excellence in customer service standards. The fairground is one of the busiest municipal golf courses on Cape Cod, hosting over forty thousand rounds of golf each year. Mary and her staff do an outstanding job managing the large volume of play at the fairgrounds, seeing, sees, sees with an emphasis on providing everyone with a great memorable golf experience. The award ceremony will be taking place at the Cape Cod PGA Spring Meeting in April. Please join us in congratulating Mary on this outstanding achievement and well-deserved honor. All right. The next one is a rather long, well, thank you, thank you. And, you know, Mary absolutely, M. Staff, and Mary absolutely deserves it. The next one's a rather long one. I've put this in because there have been many questions as we progress through COVID, and the questions have progressed into primarily vaccine at this point. And I think we will share the information we have. Much of it is outside of our control, but it sounds as though ultimately we will be administering a lot of the vaccine through our Board of Health. So I'll share with you what we have, and we will continue to keep you up. As a reminder, the Town of Barnstable continues to follow the orders and directives of our governor. The governor continues to frequently update these orders and directives, and I encourage everybody to go to mass.gov COVID website or the Town of Barnstable's website and read these orders and directives. Governor Baker announced a temporary executive order, which took effect on December 26th, and now will continue until January 24th, Sunday, January 24th. Originally, it was this Sunday and got modified today with the possibility of an extension. This temporary order reduces allowable occupancy capacity levels from forty percent to twenty-five percent in multiple sectors as follows. Typically, I ask people to go to COVID, but again, I'm getting a lot of questions, so I'll, I'll summarize it. But I always say, you have specific questions, go in and look yourself. It's really easy to, to find, and then certainly come back to us at any time and ask. Capacity will be set at twenty-five percent of the pre-COVID seating capacity and distancing between tables and other requirements will remain in place. Indoor and outdoor seating capacities must be calculated separately. Small spaces such as personal services and other spaces without clear occupancy standards may use up to five people per thousand square feet as an alternative to the twenty-five percent capacity. Limits in outdoor event venues are reduced to ten people, limits, I'm sorry, indoor events. Outdoor events venues are reduced to twenty-five people. Limits at movie theaters are reduced to twenty-five percent or no more than fifty people per theater. Office spaces are required to reduce capacity to twenty-five percent, but allowances for offices with critical services such as public safety, public health, and other critical services is continued. K through twelve schools will continue to follow the, and they, everybody uses the acronym DESE. That's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They use their standards and their guidelines for how our schools are proceeding. I've shared with the entire council, the school superintendent's update. A portion of it is relevant to this, and there is other information that I would encourage you to take a look at in that email that I had forwarded to Cynthia, and I believe Cynthia has forwarded to all of you. And within that, it does state that the school is planning, I certainly subject to conditions, but the school is planning to go back in class as they were prior to the holiday season on Monday, January 11th. So, as of that memo, they are planning on having the kids as of that memo, they are planning on, uh, having the kids go back in class. On, uh, December 14th, the Cape Cod Reopening Task Force announced the test site at the Cape Cod Melody Tet in Hyannis. Eligibility criteria for the testing include residency in Barnstable County. Tests for asymptomatic individuals are available by calling the community test line. Uh, I provide the number there, 508-534-7103. And for additional information, you can go into the website at capecodhealth.org and, uh, take a look at what's being offered as far as testing. Um, we do man, um, that site with, um, staff, staff, I believe, from the, uh, Hyannis Fire Department, uh, is assisting over there. I've gotten a lot of calls and I know Chief Burke does as well. Uh, but we are not overseeing the management of that. Uh, so, uh, the real questions relevant to that and scheduling and getting in to have a test need to go to Cape Cod Healthcare. So that's why we provided these numbers. Uh, the Massachusetts COVID Vaccine Plan was announced and conforms to the phases and prioritize prioritized populations identified by the Center for Disease Control. And I've given you a link on mass.gov. And if you go into mass.gov, uh, go into COVID, um, there's, there's a prompt there that says, when can I get the COVID-19 vaccine? I would encourage you to go in there, um, you know, for a first look or whenever you have questions, because again, that may get updated, and it has since it was created. Uh, but, but that information is there and it is the state that is controlling the flow of, of the progress of this and the flow of vaccines, um, to these prioritized areas. During Phase 1, healthcare workers, older adults living in skilled, um, skilled nursing homes, congregated care settings, healthcare workers will be prioritized for vaccine as doses become available. It should be noted that as of this date, local health departments do not have any vaccines on site for distribution or vaccination. Um, actually, we have received ours at this point, and we are planning, um, on, um, vaccinating the prioritized first responders, and that, that, that's coming up shortly. So I'll provide you more information, um, as we progress through that. Uh, the first shipment of vaccines have been delivered to hospitals across Massachusetts for vaccination of their workers. The state contracted with CVS and Walgreens to arrange for vaccinations of patients and residents of long, long-term care facility. Now, again, I'm sharing this with you because I'm getting telephone calls with people asking me these specific questions. And, you know, the answer that, well, we don't control this really isn't enough. Um, you know, I need to be able to share some of this, certainly with you, and certainly with our residents, to at least give them direction as to how this is proceeding. So again, that's, that's what I'm attempting to do. I've given you a little, little graphic in, in my, um, Town Manager's Update that shows that there's a three-phase approach for this, um, starting with a focus on these prioritized groups, um, then moving more broadly to individuals, um, that, that are in risk categories or maybe points of exposure to larger groups, and then finally, uh, general public application in the third phase. Uh, we do expect that third phase to fall to our Board of Health, and we do expect that that will occur, uh, probably late March or April. But again, we don't control that. So it'll be administered much like we administer flu vaccines. The officials at the town continue to meet daily to plan and implement proper action, which, actions which are in step with the governor's orders and the Mass Department of Public Health Guidelines. The Health Division staff continues to meet and coordinate daily to ensure we are providing the most up-to-date information to our citizens and business owners relative to the latest Massachusetts requirements and recommendations. I have to remind everybody that during these times of increased numbers of positive case count and patient hospitalizations, we strongly urge everybody to follow the state guidelines and to take these basic precautions, which are wear a face mask, wash your hands frequently, maintain proper physical distancing, stay home from work, school, sports, and other activities when you're ill. That is our front line of defense until these vaccines are administered and hopefully successful in helping us combat, um, this, this situation. Our public health nurses continue to contact those who become infected and those who have come in contact with positive cases to ensure that they are properly isolated and are following the required quarantine precaution. And if you should have any questions, call our Board of Health at 508-862-4644. I'll continue to update as we have more information. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY '22 as scheduled and are planning for a level service budget in FY '22. Last fiscal year, we modified our municipal budget proposal from a level service to a level budget approach, given the unknowns of the emergency declaration related to COVID. We are proceeding cautiously, and next council meeting Director Milne will share our fiscal projections as we proceed with preparation of the FY '22 budget. The joint meeting workshop with the Town Council School Committee to review the financial condition of the town is scheduled for January 21st, 2021. You can find all of this information, uh, information relevant to our, our budget, uh, on our town website. The deadline for using the COVID relief funds has been extended to 12/31/2021, or basically extended a year. The town of Barnstable is eligible for up to 3.9 million from the federal, um, Coronavirus Relief Fund. Uh, this is added to any other eligible FEMA expenses, awards through CDBG programs, and direct aid to school districts as part of the CARES Act. Um, to give you a feeling, we've spent about half that to date. So, um, and we are in the process of reconciling that because, you know, much of it's reimbursable, um, and we have to go through a review of eligibility requirements. Um, and Director Milne and subordinate staff are, are collectively working on this effort. But it was good news for us to find out that we were not rushed or we would not leave monies, we, you know, needed monies on the table. So this extension is well needed. Um, so we're very, very appreciative of that. And we'll keep you informed, uh, as we, uh, see any further modifications to this fund. We've completed the town's FY '20 Comprehensive Financial Report, Annual Financial Report. This has been audited by an independent public accounting firm in accordance with Section 6-7 of the town's charter, and their report can be found on page 19 through 21. Um, we received a clean opinion on the town's financial statement. Finance has posted, uh, this document to the town's website, and the town council has been provided an electronic copy. Uh, the two accompanying report, uh, that are referred to in there, a management letter and a report on federal award programs are not yet finalized and will be provided in the near future. So as soon as those come out, we'll, we'll up, we'll let you know they've come out. We'll post them on the website. We'll provide them to you electronic. On December 10th, 2020, the Town Council held a special Town Council meeting to review fiscal policy relevant to the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan and our effort to review the existing fiscal policy and potential changes for consideration by Town Council relevant to the CWMP. Mark Milne, Director of Finance, provided a fiscal policy presentation regarding the CWMP that was focused on several financial options. One of the options for consideration is a draft sewer assessment ordinance. Director Milne has shared the draft ordinance with the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, supported, um, supported by a broader discussion of fiscal policy considerations for CFAC's review and comment. The meeting with CFAC is planned for Monday, January 11. The comments of CFAC will be shared with Town Council. The link to the draft ordinance can be found on our webpage. We plan to bring a final draft ordinance to Town Council for consideration after a public review process. I plan to share a description of the communication and public engagement strategy with the Town Council on January 21st, 2021. In our continued efforts to achieve the desired communication outcome to maintain the professional credibility of the town's government with its, with its residents and stakeholders, the town's citizenry should be active, involved, and feel heard on all aspects of our government, especially the Comprehensive Waste Water Management. We anticipate an aggressive effort to engage our citizens in the review of this fiscal policy discussion, even with the challenges of COVID upon us. We plan to have the next fiscal policy workshop discussion with Town Council in early April, 2021. We will keep you advised of our progress and bring back a final draft sewer assessment ordinance for your consideration upon satisfactorily completing a public process. And I have made a commitment, certainly to you all and to our leadership, um, given that much of this fiscal policy, um, is the decision of the Town Council, is the decision as to whether to move forward with an ordinance. Um, many of the financial considerations are ultimately, um, a decision and will require a vote of the Town Council. Therefore, I have no intention of going out and communicating on, on behalf of you all without you actively involved in that. So step by step, I will keep the Town Council advised of what we plan to speak about next and what we are going to say. And if there is concern, we will pause, we will modify, and then hopefully we will move forward. Um, the, the date of, um, you know, first, first quarter '21 is not a random date relevant to fiscal policy. Uh, it's my opinion that moving into our, um, budget, specifically our capital budget, um, requires us to have established not only the general fiscal policy that we've already done, um, as you remember several months ago, but policy specific to how we're going to proceed with this large infrastructure effort. I think it will also be confusing for our citizenry if we begin to drop pipe in the ground, um, you know, to coincide with, with other constructions, specifically the Vineyard Wind Project. That'll be some of the first pipe going in the ground, and not be able to answer some of these basic fiscal questions. Um, so that's why there is a, a, a timeframe specific, um, that I believe we need to try to move through, and I am certainly mindful of that, but open, um, to, to all feedback, certainly from the council and as we move through this process from our public. At this point, and along these same lines, um, of what I've provided in my update relevant to, uh, next council meetings, joint meeting, and then this CWP fiscal policy, I've asked Director Milne to provide a review on the budget process in anticipation of that joint meeting between Town Council and School Committee on January 21st. And relevant to the CWMP, um, our continued efforts to adapt fiscal policy relative to the CWMP and to go in and review some of the, um, dedicated fiscal resources again that we have now for our CWP. Um, this isn't something that you need to decide upon. Past councils have already, um, uh, worked with us to establish this fiscal policy. But I believe it's worth noting, um, and I have received questions relevant to it, both from council and from public. Um, uh, at this point, um, I'll ask Director Milne to give an overview, and then he and I are both available, um, certainly to answer questions relevant to my update.
Uh, thank you, Manager Els. Good evening, councilors. Uh, Mark Milne, Director of Finance. For you, Mr. President, to the rest of the council, I'd like to start first with a review of the, um, funding sources that we've dedicated, um, to the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. So let's start back in fiscal year 2010, when this is when we first started dedicating resources to this program. And at that time, point in time, what we, we had in place was a 4% local room occupancy tax, and now all that money was going to the town's general fund. That was shortly thereafter, um, or prior to 2010, of course, was the last, um, economic recession. And at that point in time, the state decided to pass some special legis, for general legislation that allowed communities across Commonwealth to the option to increase that local rooms occupancy tax up to a level of 4%, or to 6%. The town of Barnstable at that time chose to do so. Um, many communities took, chose the option or made the option to increase that local rooms tax, but dedicated to their general fund operating budget. We made some tough decisions back then and, um, made the difficult decision to dedicate that additional 2% local tax on room occupancy to the sewer construction and private way fund. If you recall, that was special legislation that we had passed to create that fund for this particular purpose, and we dedicated all the additional revenue that that 2% would generate to that fund. And that's averaged approximately $1 million a year since, um, 2011, when it first went into effect. So the total room occupancy tax at that point in time went from 9.7% to 11.7% um, for the four listed, uh, types of establishments here. Then in two, from 2010, 20, and thereafter, uh, what happened was the most recent legislation added short-term rentals to the mix of establishments that are subject to room occupancy tax. Short-term rentals have to pay the 5.7% state room occupancy tax. They have to pay the 4, the 6% uh, local room occupancy tax. And at that point in time, we established another stabilization fund dedicated for sewer and water, uh, to which we put this additional rooms, uh, room occupancy tax we collect on short-term rentals into that special stabilization fund. Um, that generated about 533,000 in fiscal year '20, and so far through the first six months of fiscal year '21, that has generated about 1.1 million dollars. In addition, the legislation was passed to create a Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund excise taxes 2.75% that is applied against all five of these establishments, traditional lodging, including bed and breakfast, hotels, lodging houses, motels, as well as short-term rentals. All are subject to the additional excise tax of 2.75%. And that goes to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And that brings the total room occupancy tax, um, for those type five types of establishments to 14.45%. Now, the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund is financed from that 2.5% room occupancy tax on traditional lodging and short-term rentals. It's governed by, um, a board. Uh, they oversee the distributions from this fund. Every town on Cape, uh, has a representative on that board. Uh, the distributions are anticipated to take the form of loan or project subsidies. Uh, the funds would be administered by the Mass Clean Water Trust. This is not money coming directly to the town of Barnstable. Uh, the money is collected and it goes to the Mass Clean Water Trust. The governing board decides where it will be distributed. And the modeling suggests that the annual revenue that could be reached, uh, that could be generated from just that 2.75% excise tax is about $15 million. Additionally, around the same time, the room occupancy tax was increased from 4% to 6%, general legislation was passed in Massachusetts allowing communities to implement the local meals tax. That tax rate is three-quarters of 1%. Barnstable chose to implement that local meals tax, again, dedicating 100% of it to this particular purpose, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. We started collecting that tax in 2011, and the annual taxes averaged about 1.5 million dollars. So between the two, uh, room occupancy tax increase and the local meals tax, we're generating about two and a half, um, million dollars a year that's dedicated to the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. And finally, just to show, uh, to illustrate the, uh, the timetable here of how that tax works. And finally, just to show, to illustrate the timetable here of how that tax works, the first quarter tax is generally the quarter that we generate the most revenue under these tax. And that's the distribution we received there on September 30. And that covers the month of May, June, and July. The establishments collect the tax during those months. They pay those taxes over to the Department of Revenue in June, July, and August. And then in turn, we get a quarterly payment a month later in September. And this shows you all four quarters, what months make up each one of these quarterly distributions that we receive. Again, that first quarter being our largest because it consists of the month of May, June, and July, with some of the June and July being some of our busiest months. That concludes my comments there. And that program, I'd be happy to answer any questions before I move into discussion on the budget process.
Councilors, any questions? Thank you, Mark, for that update. Definitely clarified some things as far as where funds are coming from, what they're to be used for. And without seeing any questions, I'd say move on with the next part of your presentation, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Let's see, again, I'll tend to share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that? All right, this is a budget timeline for the fiscal year 2021 budget process. The town's budget process is contained within Part Six of the Town's Charter and the Laws of the Commonwealth. Although we begin the budget process at the administrative level much earlier, the process officially begins when the Town Council reorganizes and conducts the annual election for president and vice president. Within the period prescribed by the laws of the Commonwealth, the town managers must submit proposed budget, proposed operating budget to the Town Council within 170 days of the council's reorganization. The clock started ticking on December 18, 2020, so the operating budget must be submitted no later than June 5. The plan is to submit to the Town Council on May 11. Under Section 6-1 of the Charter, a joint meeting of the Town Council and the School Committee is to be held to review the financial condition of the town, a revenue and expenditure forecast, and other relevant information in order to develop a coordinated budget. The meeting is scheduled for January 21 at the next regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. And as part of the budget process, the town manager and school superintendent are required to develop an annual revenue sharing agreement, which has been done. In accordance with the charter, the school department must submit its budget, as approved by the school committee, to the town manager at least 30 days prior to the town manager submitting the operating budget to the council. And the town manager shall submit a proposed operating budget for all town agencies, which shall include the school budget as adopted by the school committee. Within Chapter 71 of the Laws of the Commonwealth, the school committee shall have the powers to review and approve budgets for public education, and the Town Council shall vote on the total amount of the appropriations requested and shall not allocate appropriations among accounts or place any restriction on such appropriations. Town Council may make non-binding monetary recommendations to increase or decrease certain items allocating such appropriations. Vote of the Town Council shall establish the total appropriation for support of the public schools, but may not limit the authority of the school committee to determine expenditures within the total appropriation. The Town Council can vote to decrease the adopted school budget, but cannot make the adopted school committee budget, but cannot make specific binding recommendations as to where the budget will be reduced. The Town Council can also vote to increase the school budget, but only with the recommendation of the town manager. Again, the town manager will submit a proposed operating budget, including the school budget, as approved by the school committee, to the Town Council on May 11. The Town Council shall adopt the budget, with or without amendments, within 45 days following the date the budget is filed with the clerk of the council. The last day the council can act on the budget is June 25. Finally, as required by the charter, the town manager is to submit a capital plan and a capital budget for the Town Council's action. This must be submitted at least 30 days prior to the submission of the operating budget. And the submission is scheduled for March 8. The Town Council must act on the capital budget before June 1. And that concludes my comments on the budget process. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. President.
Councilors, any questions? Councilor Cullen.
I actually have more of a comment for Mark Ells regarding the COVID test site at the Melody Tent. I'm glad you brought up Barnstable's involvement or lack thereof in the whole process. I tried to schedule a test there. It took two days to get in, not to get in, to get anybody to answer the telephone. It was, it was a really lousy process. And I'm glad you mentioned it. We spoke earlier about it, and I asked if you could bring up what our involvement is because to me, in a pandemic, testing should be free in everywhere. But it was anything but that. And I just wanted to make sure that the people knew that it was not the town of Barnstable's fault, nor is it Hyannis Fire Department's fault. They were very professional, did a great job. And once you got somebody to answer the phone, the appointment was fast, and the results were back within 12 hours, even though it's a PCR test and not the antigen test. So just the process of being able to make an appointment, which seems to me to be the easiest part of the entire thing, was such a cluster. It was terrible. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we learn from our mistakes. And in this case, I know we've not been in a pandemic before, but it's also not the first testing site that's been set up. And it was a little distressing to have Chief Burke here telling us it was going to be $50 and covered by insurance, then it's actually $110 and not covered by insurance. So, you know, if you're asymptomatic. So anyway, I just think there were glitches involved, and I just wanted to make sure that that was heard and that, you know, moving forward, hopefully we won't see another pandemic in our lifetime. But, you know, any other circumstance like this that we can hopefully make testing free in every... Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cullen. Any other councilors? Councilor Dagwone, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Councilor Cullen's concern. I had the same concern. I tried to get a couple people from the shelter that I volunteer at, and it was very difficult getting anyone on the phone, process things to be improved. At least if you can get someone on the phone within a few hours or so, like time fall, we keep messing with something. And also, I think we have to take into consideration people who really don't have the funds paid for this important and urgent test. We need to consider some way for certain individuals to be able to have the test done free. That's very important to help safety here. People can't get the test, and they don't know if they're infected or not, if they are infected. You almost have to have that kind of evidence for hospitals and others to take you in or take you. We do need to consider that in the future.
Thank you, Councilor Dagwone. Any other questions or comments? I just wanted to say thank you, Mark Mill, for educating us as always and putting it in layman's terms, not only for the councils but for our general public, especially when our coming up joint school committee meeting on the 21st and just kind of laying the groundwork, teeing it up, so to speak, what exactly our role is in the process of school budget. So I appreciate your time this evening. Town Manager Ells, thank you for getting that information. For, again, for our councilors and constituents about what's going on with the vaccinations, the tests, and all things COVID. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. Now, if I could get Vice President Paula Schnep to help me act on the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Town Council meeting held on December 17, 2020.
And a second.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. I have a couple of little typos. One was on page five. The complaint hotline is missing an L. And on page seven, Jessica Raprasetti's last name is misspelled a second time in one of the lines. Thank you.
So noted. Any other discussion? Can we move to approve the minutes? Roll call, Jip, roll, please.
Councilors, Estes.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Raprasetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Don Hilber.
Yes.
All 13, yes.
Thank you very much. And now we will go into council communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondents, and announcers. Councilor Raprasetti.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I wanted to let the public know that the Barnstable Historical Commission is accepting nominations for the town of Barnstable's 2021 Preservation Project Award and 2021 Preservation Service Award. So if you know anybody that has contributed with a project of restoration to a significant structure or someone that exemplifies preservation of our rich history, you can contact Erin Logan at the town of Barnstable at 508-862-4787. And she'll instruct you on how to download the forms and submit them, which has to be done by April 30 of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other... Councilor Clark.
Actually, if I may ask, Councilor Raprasetti, is there a list of past recipients of the awards so that the same people don't get nominated twice? Thank you.
I'm sure Ms. Logan can tell you that, but I don't believe there's anything on their website about it.
Any other announcement, communication? Councilor Cullen.
Yes, I just wanted to remind the public about the Substance Abuse Prevention Forum led by the Youth Commission on Tuesday, January 12 from 6:00 to 7:00. It's a 30-minute pre-recorded presentation by local experts, followed by a 30-minute Q and A session about drugs and prevention and all the emotions that happen going from seventh grade into the high school. These kids work really hard, and I'm hoping that we can get some Zoom action for them. I believe it's on the town website. I haven't checked personally for that, though I should probably check before I say that. But at any rate, it is Barnstable Youth Commission's Seventh Annual Community Substance Abuse Prevention Forum, and you can register online via a link. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cullen. And just to follow up on that, I attended that live and in person last year, and I've attended it in the past when it was combined with the youth summit. They've separated that for the last few years. And very informative information given by our resource officers, police officers that are in the schools and their firsthand experience dealing with these issues within the school. Not only is the presentation valuable, but the Q and A, I'm sure will be valuable as well.
I'm not sure I said the time and date. Did I? It's January 12 from 6:00 to 7:00.
You did. You did. Thank you. Any other... Councilor... Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everybody. I just wanted to just kind of inform the public, just a quick comment regarding testing. My wife asked that I get tested as a precaution over the holidays. And I called the number in the morning. I got a appointment the same day, actually 12:15, and was instructed to go down to the Melody Tent site. I showed up at about 5 past 12. I was greeted by, they were very courteous, professional technicians. They, you know, instructed me what was going to happen, where to go. You kind of drive around the circle. You pull up next to a, they've got an outbuilding over there. Technician came out, handed me a testing swab. I administered the swab myself. You hand it back to him, and I was done at 12:17. So I'd just like to let the folks in town know that it was, the process was really simple. Staff was courteous, and the entire process really was very quick and professional. So I know there may be some folks out there that might be a little apprehensive as to what, you know, what the process is and how it goes on. But there's really nothing to fear, and it really went over very smoothly.
Thank you, Councilor Neary. Any other comments? Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, we talked about our great wealth of arts and culture in our Hyannis area of town. But I'd also like to let everyone know about another jewel on the western side of town. That's our Katuah Center for the Arts. And even though they've really had to shut down in terms of their live performances, they've come up with a lot of creative approaches to keep the arts alive. And starting on January 1 and running through the 21st, they have live performances nightly at 7 o'clock called "Some Recasted Evening." And so these are well-loved Broadway songs that are sung by the gender that generally is not singing it. And so there have been performances, there's "So One Tonight." And tomorrow night, surprise, surprise, one of our members will be performing. And I don't think I have to tell you who, because we really have one very talented person on our council. But President Levesque will be in green face, performing a song from Wicked. And so I highly recommend that if you want to see it tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, you Google Katuah Center for the Arts. But if you don't catch it tomorrow night, all of these performances will be available on YouTube. So at some point, you can catch it. Just wanted to let everyone know that arts are going strong in our town.
As David Keane, the director of Katuah Center Performing Arts, says, "Do it in Katuah." So they're making it happen over there, for sure, and keeping the arts alive and the power of art. Thank you, Councilor Schnep. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. I just want to remind all our citizens out there that the Barnstable Adult Community Center, although they remain closed, are offering all kinds of remote learning programs that range from yoga to Zumba to visits to the National Museum of Toys and Miniatures remotely. They're also offering classes on how to Zoom. Speaking of the Katuah Center for the Arts, the founder Steve Gregory, with his Ukulele All-Stars, is happening one night. These classes are so easy to register online. Many of them are very short money as compared to what you might pay to take a traditional yoga class somewhere else. But I just want to remind people that there's so many different programs, lectures, options. So check them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shaughnessy. Councilor Raprasetti, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to commend Manager Ells and Director of DPW, Dan Santos. I'm putting out the information about the proposed sewer pump station at the intersection of Strawberry Hill Road and Craigville Beach Road. That's coming up on January 11, on Monday, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And the information that I got... And the information that I got now, I think we all, the council all received it, but I think this went out to the butters within 300 feet of the proposed station. I think, talk about communication. It was filled with great information, not only the summary of the project, photographs of where it's proposed to go, and frequently asked questions about pump stations. So I guess one of the big, big question is, who's going to pay for, how's it going to be paid for? There's an idea of how much it's going to cost, but, and we will be talking about the easement coming up in subsequent council meeting, but I just wanted to commend the manager on being right out front with regards to this proposed station. Thank you.
Great point. Counselor Raprossetti, appreciate you sharing that. Town Manager Els, response.
Thank you. We appreciate that, the good work of our staff that allows us to communicate well. We do expect that using every opportunity, especially during these times, we will continue to provide communication and public engagement to the best of our abilities. I'm actually seizing this opportunity because I missed something in my manager report, and I believe I may have forwarded it to the council, but next town council meeting, Director Santos will provide the CWMP update, and we've reached a major milestone in receiving a certification from MIPA on our CWMP. So that is a significant milestone with positive comment from the Cape Cod Commission. Our next step is going to Cape Cod Commission, relevant to the regional impacts and compliance with 208, but we're confident that we've made it through a major regulatory milestone, and I commend our staff once again. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other follow-up? I would propose, I'm sorry, Counselor Bogan.
Very briefly, Mr. President. Actually, I just want to commend Town Manager Els and Dan Santos for the MIPA approval. That's a testament to the plan itself as well as the given case that was required before it gets to the finished plan. So who goes to you? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bogan. Is no other comment or question? I propose that now we take a five-minute break to take a moment, take a breather. So right now, I would suggest, I don't want to request, right now on my phone, I have 8:14, so let's try to come back at 8:19. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to begin the orders of the day. Um, if I could please, uh, Vice President
Paula Schnep, if you could read into the record item number twenty twenty-one dash zero six zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is an item of old business, a second reading that may be acted upon with a roll call majority. Item twenty twenty-one dash zero six zero, reappointments to a board, committee, or commission. This is to reappoint to, in, following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, commission. Town of Barnstable's representative to the Steamship Authority's Board of Governors, Robert Jones, as a regular member to a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three. Town of Barnstable's representative to the Woods Hole, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket Steamship Authority Port Council, Eric Schufel, as a regular member to a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? We have a roll call vote, please.
Counselors, Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewone.
Yes.
Rob Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Now, moving over to new business, uh, if I, uh, could ask Counselor Shaughnessy to read in item number twenty twenty-one dash zero six one, please.
Happy to, President Leveque. This is new business, may be acted upon, roll call majority, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero six one, acceptance of a fiscal year twenty twenty-one Municipal American Disability Act Improvement Grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the Massachusetts Office on Disability for Completion of an American Disability Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Second.
Town Manager Ells.
Yes, I'm, I'm asking, uh, Director of Planning and Development Jenkins to, uh, give the rationale.
Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Ells. Thank you, uh, President Leveque, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Uh, the town has been awarded a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the Massachusetts Office of Disability for the preparation of a ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. Um, the, the plan will be a comprehensive assessment of town facilities regarding their accessibility, um, and then creation of a prioritized plan for accessibility, uh, for, for improvements to accessibility at town facilities. Um, like many, uh, grants, this is a two-part grant, uh, one for planning and one for action. Um, so this, again, this is the, the, um, evaluation and planning grant and does make us eligible, uh, for a range of implementation grants, um, that, that are also available from the Massachusetts Office of Disability. Um, preparation of this plan is also a prerequisite, uh, for a number of other grant opportunities, uh, that the state has. So, um, my pleasure to be here tonight to present this grant acceptance, but, um, I'd like to recognize the hard work of our disability commission, um, that does so much good work throughout town and are, and are such advocates. Um, it, it's really them who, um, uh, through their support, uh, with the state and their recognition, really statewide, uh, as a, as a model disability commission, um, that I believe we were, uh, so successful in this application, um, as well as the efforts of Assistant Human Resources Director Kami Cunningham and Assistant Director of Planning and Development Liz Hartgrove, who helped prepare the grant application. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any discussion? Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, having been the liaison of, uh, a year, uh, with this particular committee, they are, um, very, very hard-working committee. Uh, kudos to them, kudos to the staff, uh, that, uh, Elizabeth and Kami who have worked very, very hard on this project. Uh, this is a terrific, uh, opportunity, uh, for this commission to show some of their good work. I know this is going to be, um, time-sensitive. We have to be all done by, I think, June. Uh, so, thank you, uh, to Elizabeth Jenkins in, in your department and Town Manager for, um, working with the commission to achieve this, this grant. A terrific opportunity for the town, um, and it shows the good work of our commission, and, uh, so I hope that everybody is favorable for this. Uh, and just so everybody knows, MOD, the MOD grant, um, really stands for the, uh, Massachusetts Office of Disability. Takes you a while to get used to the acronym, uh, for that, M-O-D, but that's where it comes from, and, uh, it's a wonderful project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Counselor Hebert, and, uh, your clarification. Counselor Starr.
Oh, good evening. Um, Ms. Jenkins, I have a question. So, the, um, the money from this grant will, are you going to hire consultants to get this done by June, or will it be to cover staff time? How does that work?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Starr. Um, we are hiring a consultant to do this evaluation, uh, the, noting that the very short timeframe, actually, the, the group, um, encouraged all communities who are going to be apply, who are going to apply, um, to be ready to issue an RFP upon award. Um, so, uh, Kami and Liz have been working, um, have been working on that, and, and we anticipate, um, issuance of that, um, of that RFP as, as soon as we get the, um, the grant exception, the grant acceptance, uh, and, and the contract form signed.
Okay, thank you.
Director Jenkins, if you could, uh, please just, uh, give a message of, uh, thanks and gratefulness to, uh, Kami Cunningham and Liz Hartgrove, for you guys did a hard work on this. That would be appreciated. Any other comments?
Yes, Kami's right here on my screen.
Oh, hi, Kami. I'm sorry. I have, I need a bigger monitor. There you are. Thank you very much and appreciate all your hard work on, uh, moving this forward, getting, getting the, the due diligence on the, on the grant. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, I would, uh, move for a roll call vote, please.
Counselors.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewone.
Yes.
Rob Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our next item, uh, Counselor Bogan, if you could please read into the record item number twenty twenty-one dash zero six two.
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, item twenty twenty-one dash zero six two is new business, may be acted upon by a roll call majority. It is a resolution to consider acceptance of the grant of a water easement from OCW Retail Hyannis LLC for a water main extension as written.
Second.
First and second, and Director Santos for the rationale.
Yes, Dan Santos, uh, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Happy New Year. During the development of the sidewalk extension project that was funded by a Massworks grant, uh, in Independence Park, GPW staff identified the opportunity for improvements to the Hyannis Water System by eliminating a dead end located on Attix Lane. This would be accomplished by the construction of a six-hundred-and-eighty-foot water main extension connecting this dead end on Attix Lane to a looped water main on the property controlled by OCW Retail Hyannis LLC, which is currently the location of the Home Depot. Elimination of this dead end will result in improved water pressure, fire flows, and water quality within this portion of the Hyannis Water System. OCW Hyannis LLC agreed to gift an easement to the town in order to complete this work. This easement will be acquired at no cost to the town. Construction of the water main extension will be funded by available funds in the Hyannis Water Fiscal Year twenty twenty pipe replacement capital appropriation.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I would move for a vote, please.
Counselors, Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewone.
Yes.
Rob Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, Counselor Stein Hilber, can you read, I, uh, into the record item number twenty twenty-one dash zero six three?
Yes, Mr. President. Item twenty twenty-one dash zero six three, appropriation order in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of paying operating expenses of the legal department for the services of the law firm of Anderson and Krieger, which is serving as outside counsel to the town with respect to two notices of intent to sue received from the Conservation Law Foundation. Like to refer that to a public hearing of January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, as read.
Second.
Good. If we could move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Dagewone.
Yes.
Rob Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Very good. Moving on to our next item, Counselor Rob Crisetti, could you please read into the record item number twenty twenty-one dash zero six four?
Uh, this is an item of new business, may be acted upon, roll call majority, item twenty twenty-one zero six four, exceptions of a fiscal year twenty twenty-one Municipal Road Safety or MRS grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents in the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security as written.
Second.
First and a second, and we have Chief Matthew Sonnenbend with us for the rationale.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Chief Sonnenbend, Barnstable Police Department. I'm here to speak about the grand acceptance of the FY twenty-one Municipal Road Safety Grant, Executive Office of Public Safety, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents. Uh, this grant, this grant will allow our traffic division to participate in five different mobilizations throughout the year for the purposes of traffic enforcement. Thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents of that grant will be dedicated to traffic enforcement and providing the funds for those mobilizations. An additional one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars out of the grant will be utilized to purchase a covert speed tracker for the purpose of collecting speed data, traffic data on road based inside the town of Barnstable. And the, in three thousand eighty-six dollars and thirty cents will be allocated for driver education for minors, using distracted drivers mat, flyers, and a drinking and driving mat that we can use for interactive, uh, tracking with students at the high school and other, other students around the, around the community. Um, there's, there's no matching grant required, there's no matching required for this grant. All overtime costs, equipment, and materials provided for in this grant, uh, will be, will be reimbursed upon purchase or expenditure. And that is all I have.
Very good. Any council questions, comments?
I have one, Mr. President.
Okay.
Chief Sonnenbend, thank, just curious, have you received this grant before?
Well, actually, this is the first year they're doing it this way. This grant used to be referred to as the STEP grant and multiple other grants. Usually, these different mobilizations were both broken down into different grants throughout the year. This year, they're wrapping them all into one grant. You get the one grant, the funds come out upon the mobilization, and if you don't use the funds within that mobilization period, then you lose out on those funds. It's like seven thousand dollars per mobilization.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Shaughnessy.
Thank you, President Leveque. Chief, while you're here, I just wanted to extend a big congratulations to all your recent academy graduates. Um, and I'm very thrilled for them. So, good luck to them and their futures with the Barnstable Police Department. They're working for a great department.
Well, the, thank you very much. They're the future of the department. Spoke to them the other day, swearing in on the thirteenth, I believe, and they're the future of law enforcement. They have, and they're, and they have fellow graduates within this academy class on the different, uh, departments around the Commonwealth. You know, they're the future.
Counselor Rob Crisetti, please.
Thank you, um, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief. Um, being familiar now with the covert speed tracker, and I'm not going to tell anybody where it is, because it's, you know, you'd have to shoot me. Um, can you download that information remotely, or do you have to actually, uh, take the, the box down and, and download it, or is that done remotely?
I believe it can be downloaded through a Bluetooth connection, or at least minimally we can plug into it and download it. A lot of our speed tracker signs in the trailer also allow for doing that, but we find that when you put a sign up that flashes, people either intentionally slow down, or they intentionally speed up a little bit to raise their high score when they see the, when they see the lights going. So, it skews the data a little bit. If we put something out there that people don't recognize immediately as a speed device, then it can collect, you know, the traffic volume, the times of day things are going on, and the peak speeds, average speeds, and things like that. Do we get an actual better look at it without it being skewed by phony data that are people trying to play games?
Yeah, that, that's great. I think it's great. So, this will be a second one that you'll have?
That's correct, yes.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. Congratulations on your, uh, rant, and, of, of course, uh, kudos to the, uh, multi-talented Aunt Spillane, who I'm sure had something to do with, uh, grant applications of that nature.
Her and the, and the, and the quickly learning with Selena Bevalacqua, our traffic guys put this together. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Give us that thing. All right, looking for the questions, I would, uh, call for a roll call vote, please.
Counselors. Rob Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewone.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Very good. Well, that, uh, our regular session, um, orders of the day, that is our last item. And, uh, so now I would, uh, move, go into executive session pursuant to general law, um, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, so discussion. The open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and town council. Specifically, the council will discuss the few notices of intent to file suit dated August fifth, two thousand twenty, and September sixteenth, two thousand twenty, respectively, set by the Conservation Law Foundation to the town regarding claims under the Federal Clean Water Act and Massachusetts Title V Septic Regulations. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clark, and if we could have a roll call vote?
Counselors. Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Asplu.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewone.
Yes.
Rob Crisetti.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, uh,
Yes, sir.
Attorney McLaughlin, it will be helpful, uh, please to announce whether you will or will not be returning to open session.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
He's all set with that, Mr. McLaughlin.
I'm rehearsed. Uh, so, uh, the council will not return to public session after the executive session, just in front of the public and all those communities. So, um, and so, I think that, uh, includes this part of our meeting.